Dude they got flipped?
Yeah.
Oh my goodness. First of all, the bull goes down on them, grabs them by the horn and throws them up in the air.
Do you have this on?
Yes.
Hold it so we started.
Everyone call me at your order. Uh, first of all, the approval of minutes, um, I have, I found quite a few corrections in there. Plus, um, totally missed the whole discussion motion about the snow catchers and the down slope. Those in there, um, I have all their corrections here if we wanna just, they can make the changes and then we can go through it next meeting if that's okay with everybody. There's like six corrections and that, so if that's okay with them.
Is the only addition that one about the snow catchers and that as far as addition?
That's the only addition, but then there's, you know, a few other things where, you know, uh, it didn't say who made motions and stuff like that. So, I'll just, and I have all the notes here, so we'll just put that off till next time.
Okay, that works.
And then, uh, in the financials, um, I, I wasn't given all the financials in my packet. I didn't have the sundry journal.
We weren't done with those when we, when we had.
Oh.
That's why.
Yeah, I had no idea, so.
Okay, we can post it to the next month.
I would like to postpone that too till I have a chance to go through it, so. Thank you. Okay, setting bond for the auditor. Here's the resolution. I will read that. The Washington, North Dakota, resolution setting, excuse me, setting auditor bond limit whereas the city of Washington is covered by a blanket bond by the North Dakota State Bond Fund and whereas the North Dakota State Bond Fund provides uh, fidelity bond coverage for city employees and public officials in dealing with public funds and whereas the bond is fixed by the city governing body and set by resolution as outlined in NDCC forty dash thirteen dash two, dash oh two. And whereas, uh, at the June twelve, two thousand seventeen regularly, regular city council meeting, City Commission, of the Washington City Commission, the current bond limits were reviewed and found to be sufficient. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of, by the City Commission of the city of Washington, North Dakota, and that auditor bond coverage by the state bonding fund in amount of two million dollars has been reviewed and found sufficient date this thought day of June, uh, two thousand seventeen. So, we need a motion to, I guess, accept that. Two million is what we did last time.
Make a motion to approve the resolution setting auditor bond limit?
Good.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Keith?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, that's signed right here then, sir. Okay. Uh, trenching out the lagoon for drainage. Ryan, any care to speak on that?
Um, I asked Chris about it and to try to get a price or a range or whatever.
And we should explain first what it is.
Oh, what it is is, um, there's a ditch that's entirely around the lagoons out there that drains all the runoff outside of town here. And over the years, they've kind of infiltrated with mud. There's no longer much of a ditch there. Then when the rain hits a hill just up above the lagoon, it'll come to the ditch, well, it's not there, so it wants to run into the lagoon. Well, we have a hard enough time, uh, sending in samples and getting them approved all the time, so we're waiting. Our lagoon tends to get overfilled. And I think a lot of that's just rainwater rather than actual city sewage. So we really need to have that trench dug, uh, dug open again like we did probably what, twenty years ago?
I, I think the last time was, that was probably twenty years ago. It, uh, it's actually in between the upper lagoon and the lower lagoon, there's, you know, a road that goes all the way around and it just fills up, so.
And the only reason I say that is because we had two inch rain here a couple of years ago and that was enough where the lagoon came up two inches. Well, then I talked to Russell Leehom who lives right there and apparently there was just a swath of water, rain that went right through there. And he said, what are you talking about, two inches? We got six inches out here. So our lagoon in one day filled six inches. Well, that takes quite a bit of room up in, you know, in any scope of thinking, you know, so that, we gotta get that. If that's running down that hill and going in.
So you talked to Chris and he, did he give you an estimate or anything, or?
He just said it's gonna be an hourly rate for his machine. He'd set up a transit on the end and, and go. It's probably, I don't know, I'm guessing, I didn't measure the footage off, but I would guess right around sixty yards, probably a hundred and eighty, two hundred feet maybe.
He didn't even have a, a guesstimate?
He didn't, just, he just said an hourly thing.
It's all mud.
Yeah.
You know, it's not dirt and mud, cause it's water in there.
Yeah, the only reason I say about an estimate is if it's too much, then I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a bid on it, you know?
Well, I don't imagine it would be too high, I mean, I honestly, he said he figured he could take him, he'd be in and out of there about a day and that would be it, you know, not much.
I, I would think he could do it in a day.
Cause he's got a, he's got a bucket that's made specifically ditch, for ditch digging, it's like five and a half feet wide, so it's wider than your normal back holes and stuff like that. And he's got it on that one machine and he can really, he can get it out and up on the hill where it should be. Where before they didn't have quite the reach to get it out.
They used the back hole.
Yeah, yeah, and it's hard enough getting just close to the thing without falling in the mud.
Yeah, I, I have looked at it, it's something that really needs to be done.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, it just, my concern is doing something with, it's, you know, a day long thing that's without a bid. But I mean, you know, you know, I guess, it'd be kinda kind of a tough deal just because.
So you think we should ask like the, uh, like the three local contractors for a bid, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, just so we have some sort of estimate, cause, I mean, anytime we leave it open ended, not saying that, you know, whoever's doing it isn't trustworthy, but it sure would be nice to have at least some idea.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not like it's going away tomorrow, so. Okay, so I, I would say, uh, just get bids from the three local guys, huh? I think there's only three, isn't there?
Um.
Probably four with Jason, I guess.
Yeah, probably four with you.
Probably four. So, it would be Trespic, it would be, um, ANC, Butler and Shower, uh, Unic, Unlimited. So, yeah, we get bids. Just have, you know, have the guy talk to Turk.
And can we, can we have those all kind of done by the time we have our next meeting?
I'm sorry.
In a way we can?
Try, yeah. Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Break our turks'?
Yeah, to give some more information on that, the work they did last year, they, they tarred, then put down some foam and tarred again. And our stipulation was not to pay in full at that time because the flashing wasn't complete and they were gonna put down some more tar. Well, today, if you go up there, the tar is so tacky, they can't walk on it to finish the flash, flashing. So this bid is for the addition of some rocks and that, pebbles, that wasn't in the original bid. And Josh was going to be here tonight to talk about that, but he is not.
I guess my question is, um, normally when you, when you, the whole roof is tarred, correct?
Just, yeah, the, over the print.
Yeah, but normally when you tar a roof, you put rocks on it anyway, don't you? I mean, isn't that kinda?
Brian?
We've always seen it before.
Yeah, you know?
And with that roof, are they sure that that's going to be able to take the weight?
Well, and the, and the, and the communication Kim was going to dig into that a little bit.
I think so, but I'm not sure what happened.
And I, yeah, I have no information on what he had found on that, but. So I think we just hold on this, um.
It's one inch over the whole thing, that could get to be a little heavy.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I guess we can hold on it.
Yeah, I, there's some work with the gutter too that's less, uh, than what we had anticipated, so. I'll, I'll have an action item to talk with Josh again and meet over there and see what we can do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll table that then.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Sharvet construction proposal. Last meeting, we, uh, approved the bid.
Yeah.
Reese, you know something about this, I'm gonna guess?
Right, so then, they called back not too long afterwards and then mentioned they did the calculation wrong with such a big roof, you need to have two sets of these things. Apparently that's how it calculates out, so then they rebid for another full set of the avalanche, for the snow guards on each side of the building, so there would be four rows total, but there's an additional.
I mean, I guess I can see with that long of a span.
It makes sense.
Probably being, so, so what we're looking at is probably another fourteen hundred and fifty dollars from the original, cause I think the original bid was, was thirty-two, twenty-five. Probably it was, it was, it was fourteen fifty for the snow catchers. So if you take fourteen fifty times two, it's twenty-nine hundred, which is their new bid. So, and then, you know, they had the gutters on the original bid also for the same price.
Yep.
So this, so it would be an additional one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
From what we approved, um, last month.
He was apologetic on the phone, it was an oversight. I talked to Joan about that and, so it was an honest mistake, he was transparent about that, but, yeah, if you put one row on and it would slide and wreck that row where there you're sitting.
I move to be accepted bid.
I'll second.
Okay, um.
I have a question.
So I, I was wondering maybe you want to, um, if you want to move to reject the first bid and then, or amend it to reject, you know, the first bid and then, or, or?
How about?
Or add on the fourteen fifty?
I move that we amend, uh, I don't think I can amend somebody else's motion though.
Well, just to prove the extra fourteen.
Uh, yeah, I move that we approve the extra fourteen fifty for Sharvet construction for the extra, uh, snow guard rows. Now, my question here though is it says that to put two rows of snow guard metal on roof and we're sure there'll be then on both sides? Snow guards on both sides?
Yeah.
Right, two on each or whatever, it's, okay. All right.
Okay, you can get that.
I will second.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Kit?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. Uh, wifi from memorial building?
I did some research on that for you guys' request. I did email it to Reese Noel. A basic bundle is fifty-nine ninety-five a month.
Sorry?
Fifty-nine ninety-five a month. At around fifteen megabytes download and one megabyte upload. Um, the next step is sixty-nine ninety-five a month. I'm at a rate of twenty down and one up. Then we can go on to a bonded DSL rate at eighty-four ninety-five a month with a rate of forty down and four up. And then I talked to them about getting wifi in the whole building, um, to make sure it covers everything and they said there's something called a home wifi. And they make sure that it covers every location in the building and that'd be an extra ten dollars a month if we decided to do that. And then we had the concern of how many devices could be on the internet at the same time? They said they can't guarantee how many can actually be connected. They said the more devices that are there connected, it will be slower. They won't guarantee.
They give a guesstimate?
No. They, they won't say.
So it could be two?
Yeah. And then they just said the fiber won't be here for a year or so, so, um, these are the options that we're looking at this point.
I say table it for a year. That wifi comes in or the fiber optic comes in, then look at it.
Well, they say there's gonna be a lot more options once that.
Yeah, but right, right now, I don't see others, this, the extra, the added use that's gonna be there for this. But that's just me.
I have no problem with that, table it for a year.
My only thought is that if we, and I've said this before, if we are gonna do it, we need to make sure it works everywhere and with a bunch of people. My only concern with this is that we set it up and we get like what I have at home, you know what I mean? But I mean, if we're gonna do it, we need to make sure it's done right, otherwise we need to wait, whatever, but whatever anybody else thinks.
And that fiber optic, that's gonna be probably the best, best bid to go.
So everybody's good on waiting with that, or?
Yeah, I'm fine if that makes sense.
Well.
Yep, that's fine.
So when did they say it'll be a full year or just?
What, a year and a half to two years? Because they'll come in next summer and actually start being working and installing that fiber optic.
I don't know how that works though, because I know the school put in it and they had a company come in and put it in and they didn't go directly through the internet company. They went through an actual company that does this type of thing. And then they were guaranteed to have coverage.
And I'm sure that costs a little bit more.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I don't know, but I had asked, I was trying to get an idea of how many people and they won't guarantee it, so.
Yeah, thanks for looking into it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
And that, you know, there's some too, everybody can look at it too later, I mean, if it's gonna take a year and a half or two years, but I mean, if there's all of a sudden sudden interest in, in having meeting after meetings over here, you know, we could, I mean, we could look at something like this for a temporary deal, you know, but but I think the interest has gotta be more than, you know?
Yeah.
See, uh, Tiana from the, and Noel from the aspect of you using that building, what's the, the thought? Build it and they will come, or wait for the interest that Kit was saying and then?
You know, there's no, not, I'm not aware of a lot of interest in using it right now. For my purposes, you know, right now with my office being up at the interpretive center, I have access to those rooms up there. Is it something where we could possibly, you know, set something up at the hall? Yeah. But I just don't see large groups coming to use that area unless there's some capital money spent and updating some things.
Sure.
Well, I mean, what do you think?
I mean, I don't know what kind of phone calls you guys get for meetings. We do get people calling asking for it if it has it, and then when we say they don't have it, they don't want the building because it doesn't have the ability for the presentations that they're looking for, but.
Things like annual meetings or thing, I mean, what kind of things?
We've had like blood drives come in and they want it if it's possible. I know whenever the, there's some other, um, presentation, like some of the senate groups and stuff like that that wanna come in, they would like to present, but yet we don't have those abilities. And so they have to kind of like tailor their meetings for them, cause it's not possible, but.
Well, maybe keep track of the requests that come in and we can talk about it later on.
Yeah, just understand that.
What they're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Security system? I see we got some things, like.
We contacted Great Plains and they gave us, um, a bid and they said that with their system, they would be able to record the meetings and we would be able to take those recordings and upload them next day. We also got a system from, from WRT and they, um, can't record the meetings and let us use those for upload, they don't have the quality on their cameras for that. Call from, from, you know. But, um, and the only other thing with West River is that we would have to have their internet through them, which we currently do not.
So is this kinda like for review, because I know we had talked about putting in the budget for next year, so.
So.
But yeah, I mean, it's something to look over and kind of read through these and see what they, uh, so. But West River would kind of be, I would think, because they can't record.
Mm-hmm. When I talked to Great Plains, I said that they would just get a microphone for, go hang down the middle of the table, um, so it'd have good clarity for the sound wise and they didn't say it wouldn't be a problem. They were also able to do the key fobs and stuff like that that can be deactivated, um, for the room, for the auditor's office, so.
Are, are those programmable with our computers or what?
Well, they would have a computer that would, we'd have to set up and then, um.
That would be programmed with that computer or whatever, okay. Okay, well?
So then as people come and go or whatever, you, if they don't return the fob, we can deactivate that fob and then it's, then we'll only be able to get in, period.
Okay. Very good, cool.
It's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
Uh, I, I.
Is this the total price for everything?
I don't know, sure, this isn't as bad as I thought it would be. I was figuring double digits, big time.
Well, I thought when we, um, originally had talked about cameras for like this, you know, we had talked about like a whole system camera, yeah. I thought it was really expensive.
That's what I thought too.
Well, we had got a quote through AVI last time. They were very expensive.
Yeah.
Um, that's why we kind of stayed away from this time.
Yeah, so we something to check in.
So this, this one up here as far as Great Plains, that would be security cameras, plus it'd be the?
Yes, it would be all.
How many security? Three security cameras, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it'd be three cameras, so I suppose one would be a meeting camera.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah.
Okay. So we could actually add cameras to that?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Be good to know how many, um, could be added to that.
I believe this is an eight channel network and so you have up to eight cameras, I believe.
Are they hardwired or is it like wifi though?
I wanna say hardwired, okay.
It says with IR infrared, I bet that would be wireless, wouldn't it?
No, not necessarily.
Maybe not, I don't know.
I know when we talked to WRT about wireless, um, they did not recommend it. Um, they said their quality is not as good with the wireless.
Larry, you think that's just that table camera?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, good deal.
Just so you can see at night and still hook that.
Okay, that could be, yeah, all right. Okay.
Yeah, that ain't bad at all, I don't think.
No. Okay. Portfolios.
Oh, okay. I guess this isn't necessarily in my portfolio and I don't want any action taken on this. Um, but there was a question about what the rules are for Legion liquor sales, okay? And the issue that was over Riverboat Days is if it would have rained, okay, they would have had to move it into the hall.
Yep.
And then, there would need to be a bar open or something for that. Well, then they asked the, um, Legion and the Legion said, well, they would open it up maybe and if they did, they would just sell the liquor that they had, they wouldn't go get any extra. Well, is there any other options we have as far as liquor sales in the le, in the memorial hall, uh, memorial building? Just because if the Legion is either doesn't want to or unwilling to sell, we're kind of a hostage.
Well, the, the Legion has the liquor license for the hall.
Yeah.
In order for, um, anybody else to come in and sell, uh, they would first of all have to have permission from Legion and second, they would have to transfer their license to that building.
Yeah, so, so as part of our, our meeting, let's say we okay the liquor license for out in the, um, street. Okay, we would probably have to have some sort of thing on that saying that in case of, uh, storm or something, if it's moved in and the Legion okay's it, they would then be able to come in as well. I guess, I just wanted clarification for future, we don't have to come up with a conclusion.
Right, yeah. Um, I think that happened one time, didn't it, Brian? But the Legion opened up, you know, but I think, you know, they had, they probably did a lot more liquor sales back then too.
Yeah, and that's the issue we're having right now.
So, yeah.
You know, and obviously, you know, the, the Legion has the licenses and, and that. I guess we were just checking to make sure that if they didn't want to that day, we would have another option, you know?
Right. I guess that's something, you know, we could talk to David about possibly, you know, and see what he says, but I guess the way I understand it is, you know, we, we would, we would have to have their permission, or have to have their permission because they have a license holder and, you know, there would have to be, uh, a special liquor license.
Yeah, and we don't, we wouldn't want to have anything take away from the Legion.
Right.
Cause they do so much for the community, but, you know, we also wanna make sure there is an option just in case something like that does happen.
Yeah.
You know, and the Legion absolutely doesn't want to that certain day, you know, so we know the rules.
Did you talk with the Legion at all, or did you?
No, actually, I think Brett Barnick did.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, that'd be something to check.
So it's just something to check on for future reference, just in case something happens, there would have stormed.
Something planned, yeah.
You hate, you hate to say, well, we really expect you to sell liquor today even if you don't want to, you know what I mean?
And it has happened, where it has been moved in there. Been a while, but it has happened.
Okay, that's just, that's all I got.
Okay. Reese?
Airport authority meeting on the fourteenth of June, it got pushed back a week, so that will be this coming Wednesday at the airport. And then, um, just two things related to portfolios, basketball court that we have here at the city. You know, is there a, maybe it's just a thought to do some work on that in a future street project, maybe seal chip it. I just was driving by, walking by the other day, every time I Google I, I look at it and I think about that. What, what maintenance could or should be done to that, maybe we?
Yeah, that is the part, on by park board, I believe.
Ah, okay.
But doesn't mean we can't do it, some of that, you know?
Sure.
Pointing that out, you know?
Yeah.
But it should, you know, probably be coordinated through them, just so they.
Okay. Uh, maybe go to a meeting and bring that up.
And that's needed help for years.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah, yeah. And that's another thing, maybe it's not used because it's the way it is, or?
Kind of, I think.
Yeah. Or if we repaired it, it would, you know?
We know Adam's on the park board, so, um, he'd probably be the one to talk to and then they could, um, bring it up at their meeting.
And I, and I think Adam's actually brought that up before.
Oh, maybe.
Or, so I think he, he'd be the guy to talk to, cause I think he's interested in that.
And then I had a, a neighbor, Bill Tryon, ask the question about the ramp down to the dock at the park. And I don't know where we're at with that, if, if ever we're planning to put a ramp down to the?
Or to that fishing, or this fishing dock.
Did, did we vote on that one time, I thought? I don't think so.
Well, I, I think we discussed it and Jasper, or Jasper was gonna look into it, I believe, because, I think it's made for handicap with assistance.
Isn't it sloped, like it was sloped a certain way or something?
Yep, we built that around that way, yeah.
Yeah.
The only problem with it is, when Jasper, he explored that, I said, well, you realize we'll have to drive over that sidewalk in order to get the dock here.
Oh, yeah.
And then when the ice and water come up, it'll go up to your, right up to that sidewalk, which it kinda tends to wanna drag rocks and anything else with it and undermine, it would, it will probably undermine it, so.
I suppose you'd almost need to kind of zigzag that thing down too, wouldn't you, to get enough?
I think it is.
Yeah, that one, if they come way to the left with that little parking lot, is that, it does, they, they've got an ADA all the way down there.
I'll talk to him and let him know that maybe he's not aware of that, cause it is a little hidden off to the side there.
Yeah, and Mark is in the process of cleaning some of that up, Mark LaHome.
Sure.
And he's got a couple of trees laying over it now he wants to get rid of, but, yeah, it's, he's working on that right now too. Then he'll really be able to see what you have there and what you can do.
And then, uh, just related to, I guess, Riverboat Days, you know, recognition to that, um, committee, Brett Barnick, Buddy Lazzier, Susie Jacobson, Jada Schumaker, Jenna Schlosser, Eric Schmidt, Sherry Schmidt, Tracy Jaeger, Donna Gunderson and Sonya Copley. That was a, it was a pretty nice weekend for the community, so some recognition to that group. And it started with all the planning they did and the pianos, uh, doing pianos that came through in April, I think, and so.
Who the heck was doing the blue nails?
Oh, yeah, he did really well.
You haven't heard for that?
I know. I know.
Oh my God, he was making fancy stuff.
He was.
Wow, that was a good weekend. So recognition to that group. Really nice job. That's it.
Uh, nothing offhand?
No.
I just have a question actually about, uh, Giovanni, favorite finished, uh, project up by the underpass.
Yeah.
Cause two meetings ago it was, you know, you gotta get that, you know, bid approved and they're gonna get it done this week and it's still not done.
No, we can follow up with them.
Can I jump in here too?
Sure.
Do we have a timetable with the chip seal and those type of things as well, sidewalks?
Is Jasper gonna hold you?
Yeah, seal and, um, patching and stuff. Yeah, the other guy was one that got old. I actually got old.
Next week, right?
Yes, yes.
Next week would be the patching and then the chip seal after that, right?
Yeah, the chip seal guy, I don't know what he's up to, but.
Well, I, I think they, I, I did correspond with Jasper, and I think they're kinda flexible or maybe you told me.
Well, Aschek has already been in town like a week ago and he ran, I could, he ran all the roads to where he had to go. He was, we had his light, he was here a full day back and forth.
Oh, so he knows exactly where he's gonna go.
Yeah, he knows exactly where he's going.
Okay.
So, but he never did leave where exactly when they're gonna be needed, so, or coming, I should say.
And, and do we know, I'm sure this is, I know the answer to this too, but do we know, like, for example, Gedros is a couple of places where, um, curbs have been taken out? Will the sidewalk people come in and, and fix them while we're at it as well?
There hasn't been time enough to get those done. We thought they were coming this week with the, with the roads. Nobody, nothing has been bid or whatever.
Was the curb in the bid there by, uh?
No.
I don't think that was in the bid.
Okay.
But I mean, it, it's really not that much curb.
No, so maybe we should, when the sidewalk people come in, we'll.
Have them do that, right?
Cause there's one side or one curb at Gedros and there's one curb at Ray Sheldon's.
Oh, that curb get out too?
Yeah.
Or did, okay.
Yeah, they had to go over and get it.
And that's probably it, right? So.
Um, yes, I believe so.
So maybe you.
Yeah, so forget it then. We'll be asked, but it won't be that. Anything else?
No, that's it.
I have nothing. Turn. Anything?
Um, that's some of that cement work. The only thing that's been said is Giovanni apparently is not getting on the ball of doing some of that stuff. Uh, that warranty work, uh, for Wagner, um, they've gotta replace some cement some places. And they were gonna try to get them to do some of this curb work too. You know, but nobody seems, either too busy or can't get anybody at all. I haven't heard too much about it.
Okay.
And I'm not exactly sure who's, who was in charge of planning the parking area and even the dipper area. But whoever did that, that, those are nice areas there. That was really an improvement as far as parking for us and then also on that side.
For everything, giving an accountability and everything, yeah.
Yeah, I think Eric, I think Eric and Jasper got to that. I heard a question whether it was gonna work.
Yeah.
But once they flattened it out out here, it's just like, oh, I'm sure your fire department guys appreciate it. You know, you roll up there and there's many times in the winter, it was so slippery, you look back and your vehicle will actually slide back down.
No, but that looks good.
Ken, anything?
Actually, yes, um, the Marketing Hometown America meetings that I held back in May.
Okay.
There was eight different meetings, basically four sessions, and we follow up at the end with what's called an action forum, where we come and kind of do a download to what everyone came up with as far as their thoughts about Washburn and things that, um, these thirty-three people kinda came up with during their brainstorming. So I'd like to propose to come, um, June twenty-sixth at five o'clock. You guys have a six-thirty meeting. But if we would come in at five and do a presentation, um, we're gonna invite members of the community and from the McLean County Commissioners, um, the city commissioners and so forth, just to kind of do a debrief of everything that we've gone over. So, and it won't be just me, it'll be members from those sessions also, so.
Um. If more than two commissioners are gonna be here, we'd have to call a special meeting then.
Right.
Um, I mean, and I have no idea what my schedule's gonna be then.
What's the date did you say?
June twenty-sixth. There's a scheduled, um, commission meeting at six-thirty.
That's, uh, that's Monday.
Could we do it as part of just the commission meeting at six-thirty?
It's gonna be an hour presentation. I mean, they actually, the book calls for three hours, but, yeah. We'll give you the shortened version. And I guess I don't wanna, there's a lot of people that put a lot of work and effort and time into this that I don't wanna give them just a fifteen minute, you know, window and, you know, get it all out. I mean, I think they need to be given some time to present.
What's the harm if we do advertise that the meeting starts early?
Starts at five-thirty and?
Can, can you split it and say? That starts at five and then the meeting agenda starts at six-thirty? Is that possible?
I just didn't know if you wanted to call it two separate meetings, if it's just one meeting, then an hour.
Well. Like if we leave, we would almost have to have two meetings.
Sure.
I mean, you can just call it a special and then?
Just call it a special meeting for five-thirty on Monday. That's when our meetings start.
Five-thirty or five?
Five-thirty, is it? We can just start at five-thirty and we can roll it into our city meeting.
Okay, I will, I will, okay, call a special meeting then for five-thirty on the twenty-sixth, uh, June. And that's for the Market America.
Marketing Hometown America, kinda degree.
Because if you call a special meeting, you gotta have an agenda. So, and that's what we can discuss.
That's the only thing.
And then, uh, then I guess we'll have our regular meeting. That's expected. Anything else? Motion to pay bills? Everybody have plans for the bills?
I move that we pay the bills.
Okay, go second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the bill?
Ooh, except, yeah, one, one discussion. There's one we're holding out for that roof, roof project.
Okay.
What's he at home?
Yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, can I rescind my motion? And I move that we, uh, pay the bills with the exception of the prairie carpet services. Bill?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I.
Please.
I.
I.
No.
I.
Yes. Okay, another business meeting turned.
Thanks, guys.